To another room to have to listen to it on television, I don't think it is conducive to good government.
Mr. Lindblad.
Well, that may be that I have been at meetings upstairs and I have been at meetings where the council was all facing out and the problem is most of the time the council can't hear each other when they're saying things. So unless we come up with some spectacular kind of sound system, it's very difficult to do a meeting with this many people and have a straight table where everybody's talking out because the other people at the council table where it's very important for us to hear each other cannot hear each other.
Mr. Barry.
I guess I want to go back and talk about the transit building. We had talked about that. This is not a new issue. I don't remember us taking even a straw poll.
No, I didn't. I didn't bring it to that point. I just started asking and...
It seemed like I had done some preliminary plans in the transit facilities not only can be handicap accessible.
Yes, it's a pretty nice space.
That we can have room for us to be facing like Mr. DeVito was talking about. The biggest problem used to be in the past was the televised cable.
That is the problem. I was talking to Mr. Lynn Pickcock, the Cox something, I'm not sure what he is. But anyways, apparently, and I talked to Don Matt about it getting out here and got a tutorial on how this thing works one day. Up on East Mountain, apparently, is like a masthead or something where all this generates from and that's where this line comes from there to here to that machine right there. And that makes it possible to film. And to get it over there, we'd have to run that line, that type of line, from up there over to transit. But we kind of blew that. You know, it's gone now.
Mr. Barry.
Yes? Can you elaborate how we blow that or what?
Well, I mean, this is, I brought that up a long time ago, you know, and there seemed to be some interest, so I explored it and my opportunity was there with someone else I know that knows this, Mr. Pickcock. And I went, you know, I wanted to talk to Smitty and check the place out. It's got a few problems, but it certainly would be nicer than this and quieter and handicap accessible and it's got that room there that you could actually be visible from, especially if you set it in a straight line. But anyway, you know, that was a very expensive proposition, moving the line from there to transit. You know, they checked the whole transit flight. He sent a crew up. They checked that out and it's like they wouldn't, they could wire it very easily. You know, but missed opportunity is all I can say.
Ms. Balance, you're next.
Maybe while we're taking this under consideration, we should also explore our options. For instance, the high school building will be empty pretty soon. Maybe the city could consider exercising eminent domain and taking over that property that belongs basically to the citizens and possibly even moving our, the whole city hall operations over there and using this space for community center for different things and at that point also have the city council meetings moved to a building or a room in that complex. I'm just throwing that out there for consideration.
Ms. Pennell, you're next.
I was privy to being able to attend several council meetings. I won't say my hometown, but at least in my home state when I was working on my masters. And they had a very similar setup which would, I think the closest we can come in comparison is the way the school board setup is, which is very nice. And I think at one time there was even an attempt to try to work out an agreement with the school district and it ended up being a security issue. And, but I think that after, I'm just giving my final opinions. I think after six years of sitting in this room and planning commission meetings as an observer that was able to potentially get a seat inside the hallowed halls versus being relegated to the hall as a second-class citizen, which I've had a lot of people tell me that they feel like watching the show on TV, I would question, number one, the need to, and this would have to be a technical question. I realize that people don't have much to do on Monday night after Monday night football, but at the same time, I think that we need to consider, would it be possible to have it taped delayed one day to where it could then be run on Channel 21? I mean, when you look at it, what really happens that would affect the public, and it's not like changing nights of meetings affects the press because they're here, other than somebody, and I remember one time an individual department head came running up here basically in his pajama bottoms and moccasins, you know, trying to defend something. But I don't see where if there's not a cost, if there's not a valid technical, it's important that the people observe what their government is doing, but I don't think it's necessarily any different than whenever Don replaced it the next day at noon or whatever. Look at, look at having a space that is handicap accessible, more conducive to discussion versus heated because it's hot sessions and more room for the citizenry and consider possibly a day delay in showing it on Channel 21.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. I think it eliminates the cost of running cable. It eliminates a lot of costs for equipment. You know, if, if people want to be involved with their government, then they'll be at the meeting. But this circus atmosphere of let's get in the jammies and get some popcorn and watch city council because it is live, you know, I don't feel that outweighs the need to have an environment that is conducive to good government with the participation of the community who feel they're part of the process. I, I think the transit building and a tape delay is, is an excellent solution.
Mr. Barry.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest, I think I tend to agree, that we postpone this until our next meeting with the purpose of getting feedback from the citizens and see what their thoughts are. I think it's an excellent idea. We would have the ability to have handicap accessibility facility. We would be able to have a better layout. We would be able to have a place where more people could participate into there. I'm not sure if Mr. Parker or Mr. Raphael rather has, has looked at how many people can be seated up there.
You're all welcome to look, I'm sure.
I haven't, I don't remember if I can find my drawings on it or not, but I know we can get a quite a few more.
It has a regular room. It's probably about this size and then it opens, then there's an opening. And if you set it upright, the people in that opening could all see the council members. It's definitely nicer.
And I'd like to open that up to citizens input and by next, by our next council meeting to see what their thoughts are.
One of the things I think of also...
No, I didn't make a comment. That was my thought.
I got that, okay. Go ahead.
I just think it, it would be money that could be invested in a better recording system. For example, the way the mics hang down over at the school board thing versus having our workspace, trying to, you know, figure out where everything's going to fit and those types of things. And I think that citizen input, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna hear a lot of people say, yeah, I can't go to meetings and I have to watch it on TV because I can't get there. And at the same time, if they were posed with the question of watching it, whether, I talked to people regularly that watched it the next day when it's scheduled at noon or whatever time it used to be versus, you know, that way they can watch Monday night football or whatever else is going on on Monday night. But I think the money was spent on a good recording system and also the consideration that that be the space for all commission meetings and council.
Just one real quick note, the, not, I heard it brought up, but for consideration, the admin office for the schools in the county, it's not even in the city, so that was a consideration, it would just be advised.
I would move to postpone this till our next meeting.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Brings us to number 10, budget resolution. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say everybody's got a copy of this budget resolution.
Nope.
Nope, they don't? Oh, well Lonnie's got them, okay, I'm sorry. Lonnie, pass them out. Yes, please. Okay, motion to discuss.
Second.
Second, floor's open. Ms. Lindblad.
I'd like to ask first of all why this resolution is given, given to us when we're talking about having more budget workshops and we did not ask for a budget resolution. And it seems to me that this happened just before I got on council the last time where council member asked for a list of departments that had overrun their budgets and got instead a budget resolution to improve a budget that was overrun with costs that had not been run behind the city before the city council. So, you know, we didn't ask for this. This is, this has been done not at our request, this has been done by someone that it seems is trying to push this budget through with its overruns when we only have had one meeting, half of which was taken up by a discussion of the cemetery CDs which the mayor seems to think need to be reallocated somewhere. And the rest of our meeting was taken up by the questions of one council person when there were other council people that had questions. So I think that this is totally inappropriate that we're getting this budget resolution to amend the budget when we're not finished working on the budget.
Mr. Barry.
Well, that's what this is all about. We are, and contrary to Ms. Lindblad's comments, you know, I had talked about trying to get a mid-year budget resolution back in May for as soon as possible. And then our finance director ended up having some health issues and wasn't able to get it to us. And we got this as soon as he could. And if we didn't go through the questions that were asked in our workshop, I don't think that's anybody's fault, but the people who didn't ask the questions, nobody stopped them from asking any questions.
Point of order, point of order.
Station point of order. That's a sure statement.
That was an all-too statement. As we all, anybody who was at the meeting knows that the meeting was cut short and certain people did not get the opportunity to ask their questions.
Okay, my understanding was the meeting was over, all the questions were asked.
Well, I think you might have misunderstood.
No, it wasn't that.
That was my understanding. I'm sorry if I misunderstood in there.
Absolutely, you too.
I don't, you know, so anyway, we are here and we've got to do this mid-year budget. Last year, we screwed around with this and never even passed it and then got accused of, you know, not over passing a budget and trying to get a mid-year budget passed. And that's what we're trying to do. We have our clerk, our finance director here to help us go through this. If we need another workshop to go through it, that's fine, but let's don't use this as an excuse as not working with a budget because we're trying to deal with a mid-year budget to adjust these department costs.
We had a chance, I suppose.
I'm over we suspend the rules and postpone this until after the scheduled workshop. We at least now have what looks like what the administration is looking at fund-wise and I think would give us...
I'll second your first part of your motion if that's what you made.
Excuse me, you have the floor.
I thought he made a motion.
I thought he was in the middle of making a motion. We made it up.
Stop, stop. Do it again, please.
I will withdraw everything I just said. I make a motion that we postpone, suspend the rules and postpone this until after our workshop.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Pennell.
Now discussion. I'm sorry, I've got part of my discussion wrapped around my motion. I think this gives us a tool to work with. I, I think that in all fairness, there weren't, there weren't, there wasn't proper time given and I know that was partially due to Lonnie's health situation. I don't think that's anybody's fault. And I just, I just think that whether, whether or not we get blamed for not having something in place, we could read this and put it in place tonight and say, well, we did our job, but I think we'd be more malfees than ever anyone could come up with. And without being able to look at this, having it handed to us at 20 minutes to nine and ask us to read and pass a resolution is very unconscionable. As a guide for the workshop, it's great. And that's where I'll stop with that.
Ms. Lindblad.
I agree with Mr. Pennell, especially being as we only got the August numbers, what, two weeks ago maybe, if we got them that long ago. And I would say that Mr. Barry was well aware that the work, that there were more questions because everyone else jumped up and left the meeting and he came back and saw that there were more questions we discussed it. So we do need to have another budget workshop. We can use this, but I think it would be totally irresponsible for us to go ahead and pass this when there's at least two council members who had questions that never even got addressed at the budget meeting. And frankly, I think that it is irresponsible for these budgets to be constantly shoved through. And I would like to see our system changed for this city so that we get, are not getting the, the budget reports as late as we get them, which is, you know, it makes the council look bad, but that's part of the reason that it's taken so long to work on this.
Anybody else?
Well, I think it's an irresponsible thing on the part of the council not to pay attention to this. This is their main obligation, main responsibility. They should have taken care of this long ago. They're gonna let it go till the way it went last year. We've had two meetings. First one, I was the only one that showed up. Everyone cancels out by 10 o'clock in the morning. And this last one, we got nothing done.
Ms. Lindblad.
Well, I don't think we're being that irresponsible considering we just got the August numbers, which is what we need to do this budget, and we're getting this resolution at the table. So if Mr. Raphael thinks we should just say la-dee-dah and pass this tonight, you know, whatever...
We've had, we've had the budget...
Point of order.
Excuse me, I have the floor. If, you know, that's fine, but we got this resolution right now. We have not seen this. This was not presented to us at our workshop, you know?
We'll keep going.
We finally got August in due time, but all the other budgets were very, very late for us to get them. And this is an important thing that we need to take care of for the citizens.
To go along with the notification and that we had adequate time the other night, on Wednesday night, some people did rearrange their schedules to be there.
That's right.
Basically, some council people kicked the can down the street hoping everything would go away when we had a scheduled workshop after the budget workshop and everybody packed up and left and, and those that were talking about something else. So I find any excuse that we have to pass this tonight, I made the statement Wednesday night, I'm not even gonna look at the resolution until we finish our budget workshops.
Mr. Barry.
Well, obviously, I was correct. Mr. Pennell just pointed out that the workshop was over and we started off on another workshop. So we did have those questions done.
That is not what I said.
Don't talk, guys, I mean...
And so what I'm, I agree with, with Mr. Raphael, but I'm also agreeing that we did just get this and I'm more than willing to wait until next meeting to go through this after our workshop and so all the other council members can get this done. But again, I don't want us to play, you know, words and let's, let's work at this. It is serious and it's something we need to take responsibility instead of passing it back like we did last year.
Okay.
Call the question.
Would you please read the motion again?
Suspend the rules and postpone until after...
Are we calling the question? Did he get a second? Are we gonna vote on that?
Second.
Go ahead.
Point of order.
Yes, he called the question and he got a second.
And he got a second, so now we have to vote on it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We will.
Okay, we will call.
For calling the question?
Yes, suspended. That always will cause...
Be a roll call. Thank you. Mr. Raphael?
No.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
I'm sorry, I've gotten lost here. Can you just tell me, could you just tell me, read it one more time?
Calling the question, stopping discussion.
Oh, yes.
Four yeses, two noes.
Okay, now we revert back to the original motion and that's to postpone it till next meeting.
Suspend the rules and postpone until after the scheduled workshop.
Okay. Not for the real call, go on, there was one else.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
No.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Pennell?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
No.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Five one.
Okay, thank you. All right, number 11 is off of the agenda, which moves number 12, Cemetery...
Discuss.
Okay.
Second.
Cemetery Commission finances, motion to discuss.
So move.
Second.
Floor's open. Floor's open. Ms. Pennell.
I asked the question the other night and I still didn't get an answer. In the past, we've, this table, when I say we, this table has allocated funds for certain things and then after the fact, we find out that the money is not there or usable because we didn't put a budget line into the budget. I'm not talking money at this point in time. I make a motion that the Cemetery Commission be added to the City of Eureka Springs General Fund expenditure portion of the budget for operating expenses.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
Ms. Lindblad.
Yes, I think this budget line should be added because this is city property and it needs to be maintained just like parks is maintained and anything else that the city owns. You know, it is a cemetery, but it's also a park and there are a lot of citizens that have used this cemetery and will be using it in the future. And in my opinion, since it is a piece of city property, it should not be neglected in the city budget. They run on a shoestring and, you know, I have friends that have been buried there. Practically everybody I know in town does and it needs to be maintained for future people who will be there and it needs to be maintained for people who are going to visit their loved ones that are already in the cemetery. And it is a piece of city property.
In my discussions with Mr. Schoen, he was kind of taken aback that I even asked him. He said that seems quite out. I asked him if he could give me a state statute that required or disallowed putting the Cemetery Commission budget into the city budget. And he said, why would that be any different than not putting Public Works or the sewer plant or whatever, Main Street maintenance or whatever into the budget? So I think it's well justified because at some point in time, that place is gonna be, or the plots are gonna be sold. And right now, the only income they have is one of two places. One, the interest from the three CDs that they've had since, I don't know when, and sale of plots. The three CDs, the, for clarification from the workshop, there, there's always been a $10,000 and a $245,000 CDs. And at the expense of the Cemetery Commission operating budget, they went to Cornerstone and got all of 2004's bank statements to review. And there was no single other than deposits for sale of lots. There was no indication that there was a $20,000 CD cashed in, $10,000 it used for miscellaneous expenses and the $10,000 put, put back into a CD. Nothing's changed. It references the three CD numbers by interest number, interest amounts that has not changed during that period of time. And I think it would be prove this table to consider the Cemetery Commission no different than any other department when it comes to helping defray the cost of their operation.
Anybody else? Okay, you have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To create a line item for the cemetery.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Five one. Okay, that moves us to agenda setting.
Move to discuss.
Second?
Aye.
Okay, floor's open.
Well, I'm not gonna hit you all at one time, so I'd like to add status of the fixed asset list that is required to be provided to council.
Second.
I'd like to add the portion of the code that calls for city council deciding the number of police officers.
Second.
And lastly, I'd like to add discussion of how we're, and this is not just this action, the letter from Mr. Cross regarding the obvious lack of planning downtown during the recent events or somewhat to that point. Also, it was talked about using up all the city parking spaces and what they're...
Which letter is that?
So, August 13th, to whom it may concern.
Anybody else?
Do we have a second?
You have a second on this?
Second.
The last one. Ms. Lindblad.
I would like to add voting by ward. We have an ordinance already, so I'd like to add that ordinance option. I'm not seeing...
Still on there. I don't think we ever took it off.
I think it's on.
It's still on. Is this postponed number six?
It's postponed until the next meeting.
Oh, yes.
Unfinished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I missed it up there.
Anything else? Ms. Lindblad?
I would like to add voting by ward. We have an ordinance already, so I'd like to add that ordinance option. I'm not seeing...
Still on there. I don't think we ever took it off.
I think it's on.
It's still on. Is this postponed number six?
It's postponed until the next meeting.
Oh, yes.
Unfinished.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I missed it up there.
Anything else? Ms. Lindblad? Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Barry?
I'd like to have the city attorney see if he can check and see ramifications of having a voluntary tax for the Cemetery Commission. I know Sperryville has one. I'd like to know what we'd have to do to get something like that.
Ms. Pennell, Mr. Raphael, do you have a...
Who's the second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I would like to put on the agenda a discussion of doing something to readjust
the water rates for private citizens, the vacation rates.
Second.
Anybody else? Okay, that's it? Okay, that moves us on to council.
Somewhere in here, can we take a minute to ask these other people about being at the meeting Thursday?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead and bring that up.
Oh, let's see. Mr. DeVito, would you be able to be at a budget meeting Thursday evening at 6:00?
6:00?
Yes.
If I'm not spirited away by a gang of bikers.
Ah, Mr. ... Somewhere in here, can we take a minute to ask these other people about being at the meeting Thursday?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead and bring that up.
Uh, let's see. Mr. DeVito, would you be able to be at a budget meeting Thursday evening at 6:00?
6:00?
Yes.
Yeah, if I'm not spirited away by a gang of bikers.
Ah, Mr. Berry?
Yes. It's 27th.
Correct, 6 o'clock, probably this room, but I'll let you know so we have.
I'm available for an hour and a half.
For an hour and a half?
Yep.
Okay, we have it, thank you.
Okay, council call, Mr. Raphael?
Uh, no.
Ms. Lindblad, I'm, Ms. Balance, sorry. Ms. Balance, okay, go ahead.
I'd like to remind the people that we heard here tonight at this table, um, the city attorney suggesting that we don't make rules that would hogtie, uh, future councils. We'd like the people to remember that all the rules we have as far as city ordinances have been created by former city councils and they either hogtie us or they don't, and so we deal with what we have to deal with. So you have seen tonight, very clear example at this table, what some people have been having a challenge with at this table, uh, with, with the city attorney wanting things to go one way, uh, when he doesn't, when we try to do things that he doesn't think we ought to do, he has all kinds of ways of trying to discourage us. And I want you to remember that's what the people at this table are up against. And maybe sometimes when you think we haven't made as much progress as you think we should have made, sometimes it's due to the legal advice, the legal opinion that we're getting at this table. And I apologize that we haven't been able to make, uh, more progress because of such reasons. Thank you, folks, had a nice night.
Mr. Pennell?
I'd just like to thank everybody that gave input on any of the issues, whether it be pro or con, that's their opinion, it's not my agenda. I represent the people and I appreciate them calling me and letting me know their concerns.
Thanks, sir. Mr. DeVito?
I'd like to thank the hundred-plus people who attended the fundraiser for this guy right here, and we raised over $2,300, and I think that's great. And as Mr. Berry pointed out, we've not had a representative from Eureka Springs in well over a hundred years. So we have a very good opportunity to put a son of Eureka Springs down at the state legislature to represent us. And, uh, I'm sure Mr. Berry can still accept campaign contributions and be aware that October 3rd is the deadline to, uh, sign up, to, to register to vote. I think it's October, October 8th? October 8th, so if you're not registered to vote, you've got until October 8th, second floor here in the courthouse, please do it, it's your responsibility as a citizen to do that. And I also encourage people to donate to Mr. Berry's fund because, uh, I've not, in the 20-some years I've been here, I've not had a chance to vote for somebody from Eureka Springs to represent down at the state house. We have an opportunity to put a great guy down there and let's not, let's not let this opportunity pass, so get registered to vote, uh, tell your friends about it, uh, try to raise those dollars because every dollar will help, uh, and it's an important issue that we as a city should get behind.
Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Dan. No comment.
How much was that worth?
Where's that money?
Yeah.
Ms. Lindblad?
I'm not sure how to put all of this, first of all, uh, I would like to apologize to the voters for the lackluster way that the deer hunt has been put before them, the lackluster way that it's been organized. I read earlier a quote from, uh, Earl Hyatt, you know, that totally contradicts what the citizens voted for and says right here that, oh boy, you know, we're running it ourselves when they voted for Arkansas game and Fish to run it. I want people to know that there are 30, only 39 citizens that have signed up for this hunt. And if you go down to city hall, you'll get this list, which does not tell you where any hunting is going to be on, going on in the city. In fact, there's one citizen here that has various, many properties, so, you know, that could be next door to you. Um, I just think that it's appalling that citizens have asked so many questions and that their questions have not been answered, whether this was a referendum vote or not. And I would also like to repute some of the accusations that were made at the last meeting, including people accusing this city council of malfeasance, which apparently they don't know what malfeasance means. And I want citizens out there to know that at any time, it is completely legal for two-thirds of the city council to override any referendum vote. Whether people agree with that or not, it is a legal thing. We were not, you know, guilty of malfeasance in any way, shape, or form. And I found it really insulting that people were asking us to resign when all I did for my, for my part was ask questions that came right out of letters and emails that citizens asked me to please ask at this table. The two members of the committee sat here, meeting after meeting, and barely said a word. We never got a report, even though every single agenda that we had under reports had a deer hunt report. And you know, I think a lot of the problems could have been taken care of if we had gotten some answers, but it was like pulling teeth and I really feel as a representative of the city, of the citizens of this town, that when I ask questions at the table, those questions should be answered. And I was told by one citizen, well, the deer committee set up a meeting for the city council people, well, you know, we all have jobs and we can't make it to all of the committee meetings. That's why we had it on the report, that someone from a commission, and it happens from all the commissions, come and report to this. So I feel like the administration and Chief Hyatt can deal with this if we have any problems on it. You know, a woman with a PhD in biology said, wrote two letters saying it's not a good idea, but, you know, we'll see what happens with it. And I hope if anything like this happens in the future, that there isn't so much resistance to the citizens of this town finding out information that they need to know. And by the way, the state of Arkansas does not have a retrieve law and there is documentation that deer do not drop when they're shot by arrows. So if you're a property owner and you haven't signed up for the hunt, I don't know really what to tell you to do because you may end up with a wounded deer on your property because the hunters cannot follow the deer onto the property and they do run. So, you know, I hope we don't have any, any really bad things happen, but if we do, I place it at the feet of the administration and the people who would not answer the questions that the citizens were asking. Thank you.
All right. September the 26th through the 29th is boxwoods barbecue in Eureka Springs, October the 4th through the 7th is Corvette weekend. October the 2nd at 5:45 is the candidate forum at the auditorium. Only comments I have is, uh, if you have registered to vote, get registered and then go vote. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
And we are out, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dave.